Anytime you guys can, you just stick your cat to cover it. But I just can't. I just send a rodent, you just shoot him a message. Oh yeah, no problem on it. But he can't go to the game.
Yeah, get into the gym and then.
Greetings, I would like to call this special town meeting to order. As a reminder, please hold your card up when voting. If you have a question, please address the moderator. Begin by introducing yourself. Article 50, as you know, will have a written ballot. We'll be able to comment when that article comes up. Article 1 of town meeting is to choose a moderator to provide oversight meeting. As you can see, we have an empty ballot box. Do I hear nomination for moderator?
Second.
Motion sent to debate in the second debate, because I seconded for that nomination. For Bill Dale. Do I have a motion and second by nomination seats?
Second.
I have a motion and seconded. I now do have three written ballots passed for the nominated moderator. Uh, this is. Bill Dale, he's moderated our town meetings in the past. He's previously worked with our town attorney. Alright, and you're gonna put us in the food or secret ballot. And now to clear voting. Excellent, I have three nominations for William Dale. Three votes. I'll now ask the moderator to step forward and take his oath. By William Dale.
I am Bill.
As mayor of the state.
Square of the term.
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
For the Constitution of the United States.
With this state and this place. So long as such as the citizens of their own. I will be there.
I will be there.
As mayor of the state.
Square of the term.
Uh, we're getting discharged. To the best of my abilities.
Best of my abilities.
To do some funding to the foundation.
To the top of the line.
As a moderator. To make some decisions on the state. According to the Constitution.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Bill Dale. I'll be acting as moderator for this meeting. Couple of procedural matters before we get going. First, as each hour comes up, I will ask for, I will read it and then ask for motion approved and seconded, and then we'll let him debate and discuss. Ready to vote? Can you bring up the mic? Show us your, uh, your hand. The curve will back, okay? If at any time you can't hear me, and I have a slight hearing deficit, so I know how bad it is to sit in the bedroom not being able to hear, just wave your hand like that, and I'll know you need me to speak up louder. I will try to go as expediently as possible, but don't let me be too quick for the gavel. Just trying to get us done, but don't need to worry about the racing between the gavel and the hammer, and I'll recognize when you're slightly behind me. Yes, ma'am. I ask all speakers to make sure they have a mic. Do we have portable mics in the audience? Or we have one front here. Give your name, and remember, you can only speak and vote if you're a county West Bath voter. If you're a West Bath non-voter or a citizen of another community, we need a two-thirds vote of the body to allow you to speak. You use the MMA Moderator Manual procedural rules. Understand again, this is your town meeting. I'm here just to facilitate getting from start to end. If I make some ruling, if seven or more of you object, you will set aside my ruling, and the body will vote how they want to go. So if I make a mistake, and seven of you recognize it, or raise your hands, um, we'll pick up, call the house. This is how the house wants to involve the issue. Any change in procedure, any change such as taking all the amendment, all of the particles that go on, anything like that, will require a two-thirds vote of all the voters. And as I said before, all speakers must be West Bath voters, or get a two-thirds vote for allowing them to speak. We do have, matter of course, several staff members who are not county residents that we want to allow to speak. Can you give those names, please?
Yes, we have Town Administrator Christine.
Town Administrator Christine.
Superintendent Principal Emily Thompson.
Superintendent Emily Thompson.
And Treasurer Frederick Villa House.
And Frederick Villa House. Is there a motion to allow those three non-West Bath voters to speak at the meeting tonight?
No.
Move and seconded, is there a second? Move and seconded, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please raise your cards. Those opposed, we've adopted that. The thought that that motion will now proceed to the warrant. Article 2, to see what some in town will vote to raise and appropriate for general government wage. Is there a motion?
No move.
Been moved, seconded.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded, if passed out of the two that appeared in the warrant, is there discussion? Yes, sir.
The town report is quite different from what we normally see. It's a waste of the vote that most citizens and, and of hope issue.
The question for the selectmen, any response?
I think over the last couple of years, this is how we've done it. This is, um, the, this is the sum of all of the wages of the, uh, salary person of the town. So rather than have it broken down by individuals, this is the sum of the, this is the sum of that.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments on Article 2 that appeared in the warrant? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor, so indicate by raising your card. Those opposed? We have passed Article 2 with three more. Article 3, to see what some in town will vote to raise and appropriate for insurance and benefits. Is there a motion? It's been moved, is there a second?
Seconded.
Moved and seconded, passed Article 3 as it appears in the warrant, any discussion on Article 3? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor of Article 3, please raise your hand. Those opposed? Passed Article 3 as it appears in the warrant. Article 4, to see what some in town will vote to raise and appropriate for town administration. Is there a motion to pass? If, if you're making the motion and seconding, raise your arms and your card, alright? It's been moved back there, yes, is there a second? And there's a second. Article 4, is there discussion on Article 4 that's printed in the warrant? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor raise your cards. Opposed? Passed Article 4, it's printed in the warrant. Article 5, to see what some in town will vote to raise and appropriate for legal expenses. Is there a motion?
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Discussion on Article 5 over legal expenses. Yes, sir.
Steve Winter, is there any significant legal issues expected with the action?
One of the selectmen responded to, I'm sorry, I didn't catch your name, sir.
Steve Winter.
Mr. Becker wondered if there are any special legal expenses that might be incurred this year?
Not that you'd know at this time, but it's there to certainly protect the town to be put in that cap.
Any further discussion on Article 5? All those in favor, please indicate by raising your cards. Those opposed? We've adopted Article 5. Article 6, to see what some in town will vote to raise and appropriate for protection. Is there a motion?
No move.
Been moved, is there a second?
Seconded.
Seconded, moved and seconded, through Article 6, it's printed in the warrant, any discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor of Article 6, raise your cards. Those opposed? We have passed Article 6, it's printed in the warrant. Article 7, to see what some in town will vote to raise, who will vote to appropriate for funds received from the American Rescue Plan, A R P A, for air mask and associated protective equipment. Is there a motion?
No move.
Second? Questions in the audience? Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor, uh, who's it for?
Can you give your name?
My name is Robert Pattson.
And your question is?
Um, is this my board?
Yes.
Okay. What is an air mask, and for whom is it being purchased?
I guess that's a firefighter.
Yeah, it's for the firefighter. It's, uh, something they bring in that we're at, so it's the air pads we wear when we go into burn buildings.
For the firefighter.
Yes. Yes.
The response of the, in the airways, a firefighter, either air mask or firefighter.
Yes.
Any other questions or comments on Article 7? Seeing none, all those in favor raise your cards. Those opposed? Passed Article 7, it's printed in the warrant. Article 8, to see what some in town will vote to raise and appropriate for per diem firefighter. Is there a motion to approve? Been moved, is there a second? Moved and seconded, approve Article 8, it's printed in the warrant, any discussion? Yes, sir. Please, and feel free to get your mask up when you're speaking into the mic with your opinion.
It's like a little piece of, for everybody.
Yes.
Um, what, what is going on here? Is this a new system that's coming in? And is this one person who's being hired to be there every day? Or is it like seven different people, one every day, whatever? Could we have a little explanation of this article?
Members of the Board of Selectmen, on the phone, please, by the, uh, again, right around.
Yep. Um, it is, it is one person per day, Saturday and Sunday. So I work five days a week, and this will put, this will put a person in the fire station for eight hours both Saturday and Sunday, um, first and foremost, for emergencies, and then secondly, we have lots, they pile up.
Any further? Any further questions or comments on Article 8? If not, all those in favor, so indicate. Those opposed? Passed Article 8, it's printed in the warrant. Article 9, to see if the town will vote to appropriate all dog licenses and penalties collected during fiscal year 2022 slash 23, except for the recording fee that must be redeemed by the municipal clerk, so the state law, and additional payment to the animal control office and services rendered to town. Is there a motion?
No move.
Move, seconded? Moved and seconded, any discussion on Article 9? All those in favor, so indicate. Those opposed? Passed Article 9, it's printed in the warrant. Article 10, to see what some will vote to, some, the town will vote to raise and appropriate for harbors and waterway. Is there a motion?
No move.
Moved and seconded? Moved and seconded, any discussion on Article 10, it's printed in the warrant? Any discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor? Those opposed? All those in favor of Article 10, it's printed in the warrant, so indicate? Opposed? Passed Article 10, it's printed in the warrant. Article 11, to see if the town will vote to appropriate up to $4,000,470. We were gonna raise that much money, we just have to be on feet, not on both legs. See if the town will vote to appropriate $4,470 in motor vehicle excise tax revenue for the harbor mask to start then, and reimburse expenses. Is there a motion? Been moved, is there a second? Been moved and seconded, approve Article 11, it's printed in the warrant, is there discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Article 11, please so indicate? Those opposed? Passed Article 11, it's printed in the warrant. Article 12, to see if the town will vote to appropriate up to $22,499 in motor vehicle excise tax revenue from joint burden account to the shelter for wages and expenses and town voters. Is there a motion?
No move.
Second? Moved and seconded, any discussion on Article 12? Seeing none, all those in favor, so indicate? We've passed Article 12. Article 13, to see what some in town will vote to raise and appropriate for sanitation so the public, recommendation shown on the face of the warrant. Is there a motion for Article 13? Move? Is it moved, is there a second? Moved and seconded, approve Article 13, it's printed in the warrant. Is there discussion? All those in favor of Article 13, please so indicate? Those opposed? Approve Article 13, it's printed in the warrant. Article 14, to see what some in town will vote to raise and appropriate for the garbage to garden composting program. Is there a motion for Article 14? Moved and seconded?
Seconded.
All of, all, any discussion on Article 14, it's printed in the warrant? Yes, ma'am. You need to come to the mic, because I can't hear about it.
Can we, um, hear about this and how we can access the garbage to garden composting system?
Sir, the gentleman from the selectmen's area, what?
The garbage to garden composting program that accepts, um, anything that can be composted, including meat scraps and paper cleats. And you can access this service, uh, at the back parking lot at the town hall. The, um, special composting buckets, receivers, receptacles are big, bright green things that easily accessible. And we were also talking about having the compost that was created from this donated to the school. Generally, are we doing that for the gardening?
We're not, because we love that.
Any other questions or comments on Article 14? Seeing none, all those in favor, so indicate? Those opposed? Passed Article 14, it's printed in the warrant. Article 15, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate up to $395,710, and to appropriate for fiscal years 2023, 2023, motor vehicle excise tax revenue for public works for total appropriation of $926,750 at detail below. Is there a motion for Article 15? Is there a second? Any discussion on Article 15? Sir, give us your name.
Yes, my name is Bill Hagan. I live at Bridgepoint. Uh, the, the, the piece here of this request that applies to, uh, to the erosion problem with Bridgepoint probably means a couple of minutes. That's an unusual amount of money. And, uh, what, what we have, what we're seeing on the Bridgepoint Road, which is a sole access, at, at a point where it's a sole access to perhaps 40 homes, is severe erosion when wind conditions from the east generally in the fall and winter hammer in against our coastline there. Uh, the, the erosion that's taken place under, under the trees along the shore and, and under the road has been very substantial, beginning a number of years ago. I mean, it, it would be very frightening to, to walk in. Trees are sitting there with the vast majority of their roots exposed. That part of the road for maybe 100 yards, I'm, I'm a layperson, so I'm not giving you exact data, but for maybe 100 yards has dropped approximately 15 to 18 inches on the riverside of, of the, of the road. And, uh, and, and that drop continues since the road was last paved a few years ago. There are large cracks in the road, where, where the road is obviously dropped down and trapped. The, the situation, it is absolutely, uh, it must be fixed. It will either be fixed now, or a year from now, or, or sometime in the future when a serious accident takes place. And, and it's in a location where heavy trucks are driving over the road. Uh, it, it's in an area where school buses park every morning and every afternoon to drop their kids off. Uh, it, it, it should, it should be fixed. It should be fixed right now, and, uh, and, and, and it's in the interest, in my view, of everyone that we act in, in support of this request. This, this has been looked at by qualified engineers, may, maybe some are in the room that are better qualified to talk about the issue than, than I. But, uh, this, this is a problem that's, that's not going to go away, and, and it must be fixed. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments on Article 15 as it appears in the warrant? Seeing none? All those in favor, so indicate? Those opposed? Passed Article 15, it's printed in the warrant. Article 16, to see what some in town will vote to raise and appropriate for cemeteries. Is there a motion? Is there a second? Moved and seconded, passed Article 16, it appears in the warrant. Any questions or comments? Yes, ma'am.
Robert Pattson, um, what does the town get for $300 here? And is, is it just mowing? What, what, what is the $300 for?
Any other?
Routine maintenance and hopefully to restore the granite, uh, extensions box on the Arizona Road Cemetery? Yeah, well, most of the mowing is, is handled through, through other articles.
Any further questions or comments on Article 16? If not, all those in favor, please raise your cards. Those opposed? We have passed Article 16, it appears in the warrant. Article 17, to see what some in town will vote to raise and appropriate for community agencies. Is there a motion? Second?
Second.
Discussion on Article 17? Seeing none, all those in favor of Article 17, it appears in the warrant, please indicate? Those opposed? We have passed Article 17, Article 18, to see what some in town will vote to raise and appropriate for the Patent Free Library. Is there a motion? Is there a second?
Seconded.
Any discussion on Article 18 on the library? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Article 18, those in favor, so indicate? Those opposed? Passed Article 18, it's printed in the warrant. Article 19, to see what some in town will vote to raise and appropriate for planning board stipends. Is there a motion? Is there a second? Been moved and seconded, passed Article 19, it's printed in the warrant. Is there discussion? Yes, sir. Can you speak up? First, there are names, we have to speak up.
How does this patent court go to use its starting form?
It pays them to participate in the meetings on a monthly basis, so that the planning board sees a stipend, the members of the planning board, when they come to the monthly meetings, they're paid a small stipend to participate.
Further questions or comments on Article 19? Seeing none, all those in favor, so indicate? Those opposed? Passed Article 19, it's printed in the warrant. Article 20, to see if the town will vote to appropriate any $10,000 in funds received from the American Rescue Plan Act as E K O T in the face of the warrant. Is there a motion on Article 20? In the face of Article 51,000? Are you, is there a motion and a second for Article 20? Any discussion? Yes, sir. We may have to ask you to comment anyway. Further discussion on Article 20? Yes, great, ma'am.
Sorry, I guess I'm the blabby one today. $18,000 for the sign in front of the fire station, when we have a perfectly good sign in front of the fire station? Is there somebody going to back this up? Okay, mad word.
It allows, um, access to this digital sign from various locations from a computer in the town. So if there's a, a particular event or something that needs to be updated, we can do that from a computer from the town hall, and it gives us the opportunity to, um, have more information on a regular basis.
Further questions or comments on Article 20?
This has, this has been discussed, uh, at budget meetings for a couple of years, and because there were, we were trying to be frugal with funds that were coming directly out of our pockets, uh, we hadn't recommended it before, but it's been a group thing of a number of us for the last several years. It gives us a lot more flexibility to have a lot more information on that side.
Any other questions or comments on Article 20? Seeing none, all those in favor, please raise your cards. Those opposed? We have passed Article 20, it's printed in the warrant. Article 21, to see if the town will vote to carry forward all remaining appropriated by unexpendited funds at the end of fiscal year 2023, 2021 slash 22, from the general assistance, ambulance, MROs, M D O Ts, local road assistance, marine resources, hard to reward, revaluation accounts, provided that the funds are used for the same purpose as originally designated. Is there a motion? Moved and there's a second? Moved and seconded, we have passed Article 21, it's printed on the face of the warrant. Is there discussion? Seeing none, I'll, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor, so indicate? Those opposed? Passed Article 21, it's printed in the warrant. Article 22, to see if the town will vote to transfer $50,000 from unassigned fund balance, also on surplus, to be deposited in the long-term capital improvement fund. Is there a, is there a motion? It's been moved, is there a second? Moved and seconded, we have passed Article 22, is there discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Article 22, it's printed in the warrant, so indicate? Those opposed? Passed Article 22, 23, to see if the town will vote to authorize the select board to appropriate any anticipated revenue not otherwise dedicated for specific purposes to reduce the fiscal year 2022 slash 23 tax commitment. Is there a motion on Article 23?
No move.
Is there a second? Moved and seconded, we have passed Article 23, it's printed on the face of the warrant. Is there discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, so indicate? Passed Article 23, it's printed on the face of the warrant. Article 24, to see if the town will vote to authorize the select board to appropriate from unassigned fund balance or in surplus an amount not fund balance or in surplus an amount not to exceed eighty-eight percent of the total non-capital expenditures for fiscal year two thousand twenty-one slash twenty-two and not otherwise appropriated herein in order to reduce to two thousand twenty-two slash twenty-three tax commitment. Is there a motion?
No.
Moved to the second?
Second.
Moved to second. Questions or comments on Article twenty-four? Seeing none, all those in favor so indicate? Those opposed? Pass Article twenty-four. Article twenty-five. To see if the town will vote to authorize the payment of tax payment approved by the Select Board assessment from property tax code like board of trustees from unassigned fund balance. Is there a motion on Article twenty-five? It's moved, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion on Article twenty-five and print in the warrant? Seeing none, all those in favor please so indicate? Those opposed? Pass Article twenty-five, Article twenty-six. To see if the town will vote to fix the date October fifteenth, two thousand twenty-two, the date on the fiscal year two thousand twenty-two slash twenty-three tax month shall become due and payable and charged four percent on untended taxes after that date. Is there a motion on Article twenty-six? Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion on Article twenty-six. Seeing none, all those in favor so indicate? Those opposed? Pass Article twenty-six and print in the warrant Article twenty-seven. To see if the town will vote to set the interest rate we pay by town on beta taxes at zero percent for fiscal year twenty twenty-two slash twenty-three. Is there a motion? Second? Discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor of Article twenty-seven and print in the warrant so indicate? Those opposed? Pass Article twenty-seven, Article twenty-eight. To see if the town will vote to authorize the tax collect to accept prepayment taxes no longer shall be payable on any prepayment. Is there a motion? Is there a second? Moved to second. Discussion on Article twenty-eight. Seeing none, all those in favor so indicate? Those opposed? Pass Article twenty-eight, Article twenty-nine. To see if the town will vote to authorize the Select Board to direct the treasurer to waive foreclosure of real property tax remit금 given to terms that push back the domestic business of the town. Is there a motion? Moved second? Second. Discussion on Article twenty-nine. All those in favor please so indicate? Those opposed? Pass Article twenty-nine. Article thirty. To see if the town will vote to authorize the Select Board to dispose of town-owned personal property with a value of over five hundred dollars and be deemed by the Select Board to be surplus on such terms as it deemed advisable. Is there a motion on Article thirty? Is there a second? Moved to second. Discussion on Article thirty. Seeing none? All those in favor so indicate? Those opposed? Pass Article thirty. Article thirty-one. To see if the town will vote to authorize the Select Board to sell and dispose of all tax-free property held by the town on such terms as deemed advisable and to execute equipment needs for such property except that the Select Board shall use a special sale property acquired by thirty-six M R S X nine forty-three C for qualified home sold property to be sold to anyone other known form or ownership. Discussion on Article thirty-one. Discussion? Remove, second? Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of Article thirty-one so indicate? Those opposed? Article thirty-one and pass Article thirty-two. To see if the town will vote to authorize the Select Board to apply for and accept state, federal, and other grants, including funding from the American Rescue Plan, A R B A, on behalf of the town for municipal purposes, including where necessary, the authority to sign grant, contract, document, or other paperwork and accept the visit to the company of such grant fund and to appropriate and expand such fund to authorized purposes as the Select Board needs to invest in the town during the upcoming year. Is there a motion? Second? Moved to second. Discussion on Article thirty-two. Seeing none, all those in favor so indicate? Are there any cards? Those opposed? Pass Article thirty-two. Article thirty-three. To see if the town will vote to authorize the Select Board to accept conditional or unconditional gifts of real property provided that no single gift would obligate the town to incur additional liability until a thousand dollars or more per year as determined by the Select Board. Is there a motion? Is there a second? Moved to second. Discussion on Article thirty-three. Seeing none, all those in favor so indicate? Those opposed? Pass Article thirty-three. Article thirty-four. To see if the town will vote to authorize the Select Board to accept rejected donations of personal property and/or to accept rejected gifts of money in various accounts of the town for the ensuing fiscal year and to appropriate those monies donated for specific purposes. Is there a motion? Is there a second? Moved to second and pass Article thirty-four. It's been in the warrant. Discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor? Those opposed? Pass Article thirty-four. Article thirty-five. To see if the town will vote to maintain and exercise its right to take River Harry from the new metal lake consistently during the conditions specified at the March nineteen seventy-seven town meeting. Is there a motion? Is there a second? Discussion. All those in favor, Article thirty-five. Those opposed? Pass Article thirty-five, Article thirty-six. To see if the town will vote to maintain and wish way on winning against late and exercise its right to take River Harry in accordance with the term conditions specified at the June nineteen eighty-eight town meeting and an agreement with the city of Bath and the county of Fife. Is there a motion? Is there a second? Discussion. Article thirty-six. All those in favor, please, please raise your cards. Those opposed? Pass Article thirty-six. Article thirty-seven. Written ballot required by state statute. To see if the town will vote to increase the property tax levy limit established for the town of West Bath by state law if the municipal budget approved an increasing variable result in a tax commitment that is greater, that is greater than the property tax levy limit currently. I'll ask the Select Board, do we need to vote on this? Have we raised the property tax levy limit? I think I'll entertain a motion to definitely postpone Article thirty-seven. And a second? Any discussion on that? Not necessary, we won't move on. I'm just saying because I have Article thirty. You might be known as the self-deprecating. Article thirty-eight. To see what some in town will authorize the school board of directors to spend for regular instruction. Is there a motion?
Um, may I make a motion that we approve Articles thirty-eight to fifty-four as one item with the exception of Article fifty that requires a written ballot?
Can you do those numbers again? Article?
Thirty-eight through fifty-four with the exception of Article fifty.
All right, a motion has been, a procedural motion has been made now to lump all those together and vote on them as a whole, thirty-eight through fifty-four other than fifty. That will require a motion to manage an effect which you're making?
Yes, sir.
And a second? All right. And this will require two-thirds vote, so. All of you who are in favor of the pending procedural motion, take Articles thirty-eight and fifty-four other than fifty as one. Is there a discussion? Yes, is there a discussion on that motion? This is just a motion, not the Articles themselves. All right. This is just a procedural motion, take them all together. Those in favor? Those opposed? Pass that procedural motion. Now, we're ready to consider Articles thirty-eight through fifty-four other than fifty. Ma'am, would you like to make a motion to pass all of thirty-eight to fifty-four other than fifty?
Yes, sir, so moved.
Is there a second? All right. Been moved to second and procedural, take thirty-eight to fifty-four as one other than fifty. Is there a discussion? Yes, sir.
My name is Robert Weir. I've been resident of Bath for the last fifteen years. And West Bath is me. West Bath, Barisno Road is my address. I just want to make a comment in favor of the people that are running our town. That's the Select Board, the town employees, the town officers, the school board, the principal and, and superintendent of our school system. We've been through a couple of really rough years for all of us in this world. And these people have worked awfully hard and I can't say anything except to also recognize the budget from any of the people chaired by David Tennessee that worked tirelessly. This is the third year in a row with all of this approved and we've done so far tonight and motion in front of us where our tax bill rate will stay the same, no increase. And I think the folks that are making that happen deserve a lot of credit.
Any further questions on the merits of Articles? Wait a minute. Excuse me. Thirty-eight through fifty-four other than fifty. Anyone discuss on the merits of any of those Articles? Seeing none, all those in favor please so indicate? Those opposed? Pass Articles thirty-eight through fifty-four other than fifty. Next matter before it will be Article fifty. Uh, written ballot required. Somebody from the school department wants to explain this. Article fifty is to see what some town will raise and appropriate an additional local fund. The school board directors recommend one million two hundred ninety-nine thousand four hundred twenty-eight, four hundred eighty-two dollars, twenty-nine cents, which exceeds the state essential programs and services allocation model. The school board of directors recommending one million two hundred fifty-four, four hundred eighty-two dollars, twenty-nine cents. As required, fund the budget recommended by the school board of directors. Is there a motion to pass it? Move to second? Um, would you like to comment on that?
Yes, uh, my name's Ashley Randall. I'm the chair of the school board. Um, so just this article is stating is that this is the amount that we have to, um, raise as a town in order to receive the minimum subsidy from the state. And then the second amount is the amount to fund anything that's not included in the first amount.
Can you elaborate a little bit?
The ways full funding is set up is you are required to raise a certain amount in order to, um, get your state subsidy. And then beyond that, um, you will raise additional local funds to fund the rest of the funding areas of the system. And so the additional local funds are for items that are not part of the, um, essential programs, the services, school budget model, like special education, transportation, things that were required to provide but are not part of the built-in model for funding. So that's the additional local is.
And by state law, this requires a written ballot? Ma'am, can you tell me if by state law that requires a written ballot?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Before, before we have you vote, any more discussion? Yes, sir.
Steve Winter, West Bath.
Could you take your mask off a little bit here?
Steve Baxter. Steve Winter, West Bath. So this state model says we should spend roughly forty-nine thousand dollars for essential services? Looking at the difference of the two numbers involved?
No, the, sorry. The difference between those is, does not, sorry, I was referring to the one above. I am so sorry. Um, the difference between those are the money that is for food service. We do not count food service funds, which is one day for forty-five thousand, um, as part of this budget. And so that's the difference between the two models.
Sounds like a very interesting state model that they have. But it bothers me a lot of things in states.
Will I, will I tell me to take initial notice of that? Any further questions or comments on Article fifty before we have, uh, sink a ballot? Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, Madam Clerk? You ready?
I am ready. Though for the town that the ballot boxes get them empty?
Okay.
Okay, we'll fill it up.
So people?
If anyone does not have a writing utensil, there are some provided here. Uh, I don't know.
So we don't all crowd at once, so I'll have everybody on the side of the room closest to the clerk stand up and queue up to vote. And once they've got pretty much done, we'll have the people on this side. Excuse me, a point of order after you vote in the first time. Change your seats so the meeting can... Once you've done voting, please, uh, thank you. Is everyone voting?
I declare that voting is now closed.
Voting is now closed. And the clerk and her assistant will count that vote. Yes?
Yes, we'll continue counting those up.
That motion passed, twenty-nine in favor and one opposed.
County member who have passed that article by a vote of twenty-nine in favor, one opposed, that concludes all of the business on the warrant in a motion to adjourn. Motion to second, all those in favor, so indicate. We're done, thank you, everybody.